We're good, alright. Alright, we're gonna call the order. It is 10-0-2. We're missing Commissioner Jasperson today, but we do have a quorum. If everyone will rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, as everyone is aware, Roy Lloyd has passed away. Roy was a Commissioner for, for the county and he was a friend of mine and I'm sure he was a friend of, of most, and so this time I'd like to have a moment of silence for Roy Lloyd. Alright, thank you. I'd entertain a motion to accept the staff report.
So moved.
I got a motion to accept. Do I have a second? I have a first and a second to accept staff, staff report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries four zero. Has everyone got a chance to look at the minutes? Does anybody have any corrections? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes then.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I'll second that.
I got a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries four zero. Alright. Cassidy, anything from, from the county commissioners?
The only thing that we had from the county commissioners from our meeting in November was that they agreed to go ahead and postpone our zone map amendment for Timothy Bachelor's property until we have our compliance issue taken care of.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. I'll turn the time over to Cassidy.
Alright, thank you very much. So our meeting this morning for a zone up amendment, it should be a pretty straightforward one, pretty, pretty simple here, but the property owner is BLM and our applicant is Mountain West Overthrust Pipeline Cindy Sheehan and the applicant is present today, so she can answer any questions that you may need answered as well. Currently, this property is zoned for agricultural and heavy industrial use and we're looking just to change it to all heavy industrial in specific areas, which we'll show in just a moment. The infants, infrastructure here is, we have US Highway 191, Candace Station Road, which is a private road. It's also within fire district number one response area and the scenic slope overlay area and it's within the growth management area as well. So the areas that we're looking at, the applicant would like to clean up the zoning here by amending the zoning in the quarter quarters of section 24 that are outlined in blue here. So instead of being zoned as heavy industrial and agricultural, we would have them zoned as just heavy industrial. And then here is just another view of that kind of zoomed out, so you can really see the, the areas that are going to be impacted. Then we've got our views here of our public notice to the north, south, east and west as well. And that brings us right into our review criteria. So first of all, staff feels that the amendment does encourage growth and economic development to continue in an orderly manner and in locations that contribute to the economic and social well-being of county residents. Second, this is suitable zoning for the existing topography and it would allow for future projects and expansion. The proposed zoning is compatible with the existing and allowable uses of adjacent properties. The adequate parts that are going to be impacted by this zone map amendment would, they are currently zoned for either agricultural use or for heavy industrial use anyway, so adjacent properties won't be impacted negatively here. And there are adequate facilities currently located on the existing property for the facility that is out there. Our fifth is that the amendment should not adversely affect adjacent properties, communities, or the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Sweetwater County. And staff does not find that there will be any adverse effect. And finally, the request conforms to all applicable provisions of the resolution. We did receive two public comments or agency comments. We had Jared Martin, right away specialist stating that to soar logistics Northwest Pipeline LLC is clear. And Ryan Reed stating this property has no AML concerns with regard to abandoned historic mines, so no issues on this end. And with that, that brings us right to our recommendation. Staff recommends approval of this own map amendment from agricultural and heavy industrial to heavy industrial as requested by Mountain West Overthrust Pipeline. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant, please step forward. And can you introduce yourself for the record?
Sure, I am Cindy Sheehan. I am the land representative for Mountain West Overthrust Pipeline.
Okay, um, did you have anything to add or?
No, I'm not really. I think Cassidy did a great job. Really what this is, is that's the old quest are compressor stations. There's five compressor stations in that area that you could see on that map. So we're just trying to make sure that as we expand, we caught the zoning in it and so we can just do simple building permits. It's already the same use. It's been that use since the late 50s. And so we just wanted to make sure that it was an easier process for all of us. Sometimes when we have that mixed zoning, you end up with people doing something where they shouldn't in, in expanding, just thinking that because we have a permit with the BLM that it's okay and it's allowable. So I just wanted to clean that up and make sure it's all okay.
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 Thank you. Does anyone have a question for? Does she have? Alright, thank you. Alright. The commissioners have any comments or questions?
No, this one's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Rob?
Alright, we'll open it up to the public for anyone who wants to speak for, against, or in general. Alright, seeing nobody and hearing from nobody, we'll close the public porch, public comment. Does the board have anything they want to add? Anything else? Alright. I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve public hearing number one zoning map amendment agricultural to I to heavy industrial and, and to I to heavy industrial.
Alright, I have a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries for nothing. Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to the second public hearing. I understand Eric's gonna present that to us.
Yeah, just give me a second, just pull that up, okay?
Sounds good.
I have till 11:30 and then I have to go back on my meeting, so hopefully we can get through this. So let's see.
So you're not gonna read it line by line?
I do. Thanks Cindy.
Yeah, let's do that. There's five. Just make sure that stays muted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So getting right to it, so we have some several language amendments to the zoning resolution. And we're gonna go through one of them, the big one. Mr. Allen was here to discuss the international fire code and so that'll be part of the adoption or recommendation to adopt in the new international fire code. The, we're gonna make some changes to the district use chart and which includes changes to the conditional use permit section parking table. Really, the big issue that we're dealing with today is establishing recreational vehicle camp or park standards. Our concern is, is that we have no standards whatsoever. The state used to regulate this and then they no longer regulate it through the Department of Agriculture. So I wanted at least get something established, so we have something in the works. And then also, we didn't, we lacked a lot of definitions, so left it open for a lot of interpretation and confusion for staff. And so what we're just trying to do is clarify when something's listed in the use chart, it's defined. Definitely have to put glasses on. Okay. So one of the changes, we'll start in section three. And then I'm just gonna go section by section and if you have any questions or concerns, just bring them up. The first one, as you can see, is, is we're moving application fees into this section, so there's no changes to that. I do think we need to revisit our application fees. For right now, we really don't have any hard data to go in and change these, but some of the need to make sure that these permits are reflecting the work that's being done on them. And there's been, you know, just some processes have been streamlined, so those fees should reflect that and other processes are actually longer, so we want to make sure that those matching. But the reason for moving it out of a section is so it opens another section up in the code. And then also it's the beginning of the code, so when the public looks for it, they can find out how much stuff is. So what we're gonna establish is a supplemental use regulation. And that's where we're putting the RV campground standards. So the supplemental use regulations is for when we want to take a use that we think more than just a conditional use, just, just say, you know, whatever use that may, let's say it's explosives or something and it's a permitted use. Whatever it may be, or telecommunications towers is another good one that we have no regulations for. That we actually can take it and put it in a supplemental use regulation section. So that's why we took the application fees out and put it in supplemental use regulation. RV campgrounds, so we're gonna start there and then probably the next amendment you're gonna see is telecommunication regulations. So nothing has changed in here, Mr. Chairman. This is just moving it from one section to the other. Any questions? Okay, I didn't think so on that one. Okay. Okay, so if you go to page 26 of the code. So what we're looking at doing there is adopting the 2024 international fire code. And then all code enforcement specialist, Mr. Alan Adams has done is made sure the sections reflect actually, you know, once they change the code, sometimes the code sections change, so we made sure we made those updates. That's all there is really to that. Any questions or any questions for Alan? Something in order to maintain home rule, we have to adopt what the state has, so there's really not much choice in the matter. Okay. Okay, we'll move on. So we'll go into the use charts now and I believe what's happened here is we have changed names and uses according to the definition. So all you're really gonna see in here is some updated language for current uses. So probably want to save our questions for when we get into the actual definitions, but commercial recreational services, we just have florist in there now, uh, cause we have already nursery as another identified category somewhere else, I believe. Frozen food locker plant? Don't even know what that is, so taking it out of the code. In the 20 years I've been here, I've never had a frozen. Unless someone can indulge me that they know of some, something else, but anyways, so we removed that. So garden center nurseries just included in the item below. You go to the next use chart change contractor yard contractor services. Finding those two out, which we'll get in the definitions. Childcare center, family childcare center, those are to reflect what's in state regulation, cause as you know, the Department of Family Services, if you don't know, are the ones that regulate that, so we wanted to make sure we're matching similar language. And then under entertainment, recreational vehicle park and campground, so we're changing the terminology to reflect what we have in the supplemental use regulation. Down under track, trail, course or speedway, I took out trail. It's just an odd thing to define, I guess, if somebody wants to build a trail on the property. I'm not sure why we have a problem with that. And then the other issue would be if you're building a trail across somewhere. Really see that as a road or right, I mean, it's really kind of a right of way issue. Just took that out of there, just was confusing more than anything. I don't. Yeah, just, I know what it was to consider, but really if somebody's to develop a motocross track in the rec yard. Yeah, I, that's really the issue we're trying to regulate there. Any questions so far, Mr. Chairman? Nope, don't see any. Okay, moving on. And then as you go on to the next page, water treatment and disposal facility commercial, facility commercial adds to match DEQ regulations. We took out evaporative ponds commercial. It was just very confusing. Someone can have a retention or detention pond as far as drainage goes, and then there was confusion as what is an evaporative pond? Cause that could be considered that. So really what we're talking about there is those produce ponds that that are out there. So we're just matching language to DEQ there. Under lodging, just bringing that up to current language hotels. All are regulated under one category. And then under manufacturing. And we talked to engineering about this too. So we have asphalt and concrete mixing or badge plant, so as a use. We had it separated out, ready mix cement plant, which I don't see how that's a different category. It was almost regulated the same as asphalt and concrete mixing or badge plant. Unless I'm missing something there, do you think we need to separate those out?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Under mining. Just mining surface, we'll have a definition for that and mining and processing underground, we'll have a definition for that. And then their fire department, fire protection facility, we remove the word public. And that's really it through the use chart. Okay. In the conditional use section, so we move on to section seven, page 50. Sorry, 51. What we're doing there is campgrounds for recreational vehicles and we probably, I just noticed, I'll make a note of this, that we need to change this language to reflect what's in the supplemental use regulations, so we'll have to make that change. But basically what we're saying here is we're not changing anything here that was a listed conditional use, cause in certain categories, it is a conditional use. We're saying just please refer to the section 19, so that's all that is there. If you go to the parking regulations, which is under page 79. Really what you're seeing there is updated language to match what's in the use chart, which is going to be defined. So that's all that is. A lot of cleanup. Okay, so here's where we get into the major changes in the regulations. So this is all brand new language, all of it. So what we're trying to regulate here is
Which page are you on there?
Sorry, page 140, that's right, cause you have the full document, correct? Okay, so page 140, I'll let you get to it. Section 19. We're gonna pull up the language too, that way that if there's any changes, we can make those. Okay, Mr. Chairman, so the first is a purpose and finding, so this is just gonna be a general purpose and finding. Just that it's establishing additional standards for particular uses. So that this will be a brand new section in the code and then we can just add as we see fit for if there are uses we want specific regulations for. It's protect public health, safety and welfare. Implement the comprehensive plan, so that's really all that is, is a purpose and finding statement at the beginning. The regulations supplement other code regulations, so what this is basically saying is, is this is in addition to other parts of the code, so if there's site plan requirements or other parts of the code, like parking or whatever it may be, that this is just in addition to that. But this is where, so that's really what the regulation and other code regulation section details. When you get into the recreational vehicle parks and campground, this is where it starts. And really what we're stating here is, you know, whether, cause in certain instances, this will be a permitted use, so it won't have to come to the planning and zoning commission, but it does need to meet these development standards. So I'm gonna get going through the development standards. So, and read these through, cause this is where I want to make sure I did, as far as where I got these regulations, it's a kind of a combination of a lot of different places I looked in Wyoming and then looked at some other state regulations in other states, but Campbell County is the one that usually has a lot of similarity as far as economy and just, just, just the layout as far as planning and zoning goes. Now, there is a difference between Gillette and Campbell County as far as Sweetwater County, they have adopted a building code, so we don't have that. So there were certain things that I didn't put in here because we don't have building code, we have no way of enforcing it, so those have been removed. But I want to at least establish and just for discussion as we go through, make sure we're okay, so.
Sorry, Eric, I just have one question.
Yeah.
So some of these recreation areas, recreation campgrounds, they have permanent buildings. Will this cover that also?
Guess those would be ancillary, so yeah, so the only, what it covers in here would be if there's housing, like a guest, like a caretaker quarters, which are usually is, someone's on site. The only thing I don't think is covered in here is potentially like those little cabins might not be in here, but then that we might have to look at in a different category, like KOA has those little cabins. I think you would be allowed to probably do it as maybe like a hotel or motel room and add those into a like, let's say the zoning is commercial recreational services, you would be able to establish it under that, even though it's in the campground, you could still do it under different things. I, I think there's a way of permitting it. This is just really more, what we're talking here is spaces.
Yeah, I was, I was reading this and I was just, I was seeing that, but I was thinking, you know, most campgrounds anymore, they have permanent facilities though too, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, yep, good question. So the development standards for the lot, the spaces, lot sizes, or should say probably spaces there, so if we could change that. The parcel or the spaces to be used for campground for recreational vehicles shall not be less than two acres. So what we're saying there, oh, sorry, that is lot size, parcel size, sorry. So what we're saying is the entire parcel, not the lots, not the spaces of the actual individual. We're just saying we don't want to get into the one acres of potentially mountaineer and putting campgrounds in there. We're trying to, trying to at least, I mean, I mean, two acres is probably small, but didn't want to be too restrictive. Any concerns about that? This should be larger.
Okay. I can say, and as you said that two, two acres. I was just thinking to rise up north toward Yellowstone and seeing little campgrounds and they're
Yeah.
Not much bigger than that parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Ten or 12 campers.
Yeah.
Now, and I was like, it's, it's very intimate, very nice. We're not looking at making a big business or.
Yeah. It's almost 88,000 square feet, so that's, yeah, I think that's, I think that's pretty good.
Okay.
You know, I'm just, I was just looking.
Probably should have some minimum in there, or you're gonna have something weird.
You'll have two campers sat together and it's campground.
Yeah.
You know, but then we'll go all back to say NFR when
Yeah.
we're, I live out north and I can lease out a spot to come out and let somebody come park your camper while these guys are coming in. You're, I mean, you're splitting hairs to a point and I'm like, just
Yeah.
let people do what they want to do with their ground.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's just my point of view.
Yeah, no, good points, excellent points, excellent. Okay, so density, so all recreational vehicle campground shall have a maximum density of 12 recreational vehicles per acre. Again, just got that from Campbell is where I got that from. And then what that does, we're just trying to control density in there, so it doesn't get too out of hand. Each recreational, and then as far as the site goes, so the actual spaces shall have a minimum space of 1,800 square feet for each recreational vehicles. Each recreational shall have at least 30 feet wide and the boundaries of each space permanently marked on the physical site. So again, I use this because this is consistent with the density requirements that they have up there. So that there's enough space and then there's clearance in here too, cause a lot of people have slide outs. I have a slide out on mine. You know, making sure you have enough distance clearance in between them. That's what the next statement is. As far as clearance, seven feet clearance between them and we're just trying to make it, make it safe there, that's the right night, next to each other.
Just one little question for you, Eric.
Sure.
What's our density in the campground that county has out north of town?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, our
And what's our density?
Events complex.
Oh, the events complex, okay.
Yeah, cause I don't think it's 30 feet wide. I think that's
Definitely not.
Yeah, that's pretty big.
I mean, what's our density? I mean, if we're gonna limit somebody coming in to do it, we should hold to our same rules. We shouldn't restrict it tighter than what we're doing.
Yeah, if you're doing seven feet on each side, there's 14 feet and campers eight feet wide with the tip outs, maybe 12 foot. So 30 feet is pretty wide.
Okay.
I would, I would cut that down and look at maybe cutting that down.
Okay.
And like Commissioner, Richard said, you know, maybe match what the county's already done.
I can do that. Cause I, I do know there's some plans potentially for more
Yeah.
camping out there as well, so.
Or at least adjust what we're doing. We don't want to be privy to ourselves to allow, we can do it, but you can't, you know, I don't.
Sure, no, no.
I don't wanna see that argument.
And, and just so you know, I'm good making the changes and coming back. What I did is I looked at, this matches KOA. So I did look at that as far as that, but I did not look at the events, it's in the city, so I have not checked that, but we can, I'll take a look at that and see what it is. Probably what my recommendation is gonna be today is at least we can move forward with. Hopefully, there's a lot of definitions we're good with, anything that we work on today, but I'm good with. hopefully there's a lot of definitions we're good with, um, anything that we work on today, but I'm good with just, you know, probably tabling this, the supplemental use regulation section, so we can come back and.
This is almost, we need to come together for a couple hours and
Sure.
share a, our brainstorm like we did a couple years ago on this, you know, we'd just come together and go through one by one, we each put in our
Okay.
two beds, and, and that would help, I think that might help you also, I mean, you set the framework, and we sit down
Exactly.
not both of it, you know?
Yeah, and that's, that's really what I, uh, the intention is today, is just at least get a little bit of feedback, and then I can go back. I didn't think we were gonna pass these today, just so you know, because I, I needed feedback as I was going through this, I, you know, this is something brand new.
Thing for what we're doing, you know, we need to sit down and
Sure.
and I think maybe we should get together, you know, after a meeting and spend three hours in here and
Like a workshop.
Like workshop.
We can do that.
I think, that's my opinion.
Okay, and we can schedule that, that's no problem, okay.
But it's good work, I see the work in this, and I'm like proud of our land use department for putting us together.
Yeah, you have to start somewhere, right?
It has to start somewhere.
And this is probably gonna get, so I'll make, I made notes of that, so that we will, as far as those density requirements and the state, and all that, and setbacks and such, I will check with all of our, with the events complex, um, you're right, there are definitely difference, um, there's some differences in sizes there, I wanna make sure we're conforming to that, because that is a county facility, so it only makes sense. So in the next section, and need a little bit of feedback on this, too, as far as, um, so, especially when we get into water and sewer and all those requirements, okay? So sanitary station will be provided with every recreational park, which provides space for independent travel units. So just so you know what an independent travel unit is, is an RV with a, with bathroom facilities in it, so. How does the planning and zoning commission feel about that? So what we're saying here is, is that if you wanted to build, I'm not talking about man camps, because that, that would be, that'd be ridiculous. Yeah, so, what I'm talking about here is, is if you're gonna establish an RV campground, because we get a lot of calls on this, so I need to, we need to think outside of like, if this is in the red desert, because we get a lot of calls on that, I wanna do an RV campground out there. Or around the gorge, or, um, you know, wherever it may be. What we're saying there is, if you have that, you need to have a dump station, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I agree, uh, for one thing, you have to either, you either have to provide individual hookups for each unit, or else a dump station, because how many people have seen people just open up their gray or black water tanks as they're driving away, they have to be able to, they have to provide, I know it's a cost expense, but it's, it's better to have them, I don't want them to have the excuse saying, well, you didn't have one, so we just dumped it on the road.
Right.
So, yeah, you definitely need to keep something in there.
Point, you're gonna need access to something sewer, because I mean, it's like, it's going up to a campground.
No, you can, you can do, uh, uh, dump sta, you can do a, a infiltration system, you know, septic system, you can do them on large scales, I've done them. So they, it's gonna be a cost, but I would rather have them put that in the ground, or, you know, have, have that, provide that ability for a campground, and then not, I mean, I think that has to be in the regs, I really do.
Do you wanna have a size?
You can have a dry campground, they're dry, they got water, that's what they, you know, it's, it's whatever the business wants to provide a service for.
I think if it's a business.
More primo, you know?
No, Kelly, I think if it's a business, and if people actually build a campground, I think that they should require either individual lots for their uh, sewer and water hookups, or they should have a dump station, the minimum. I, I do agree with that, because I just think I've seen too many people dump up on the side of the road.
I've never seen, I go out to the, I go out to the dump, so, or the sewer dump, and you drive through on the way back to town, that's my routine, or out north where you can pull over to the campground, and they, they're plugged into sewers, so they actually have a good place to dump to.
Well, you see people camped on the sides of the roads all the time, I mean, up north, e- even in the, uh, out towards Kittingham Hunting, that's fine, I mean, there, they, they have a dry unit there, they're keeping, they're containing all their waste. And those people know that, but if you do a, a designated campground area, there has to be a designated area to dump that material. Yep, that's how I, that's, that's my thought.
Yeah, I think you have a designated spot, they don't necessarily have to require the people that stay there to dump.
Yeah.
They can still go to the city and dump, but you gotta have a place for them, to be able to do it.
Even they have, oh, is it One Chip Bridge, you know? Is it up there towards Pine, you have One Chip Bridge, or?
Oh, you got, uh, Warren Bridge.
Warren, yeah, you know, I don't know what kind of facilities they're actually using, because that's off the beaten path.
Well, the Forest Service is a little bit different, they'll have just water hookups and those sewer hookups, and.
They got dump station up there.
Yeah, exactly, so if, I, I'm a proponent, because I've seen toilet paper and everything else on the side of the road, and that is from those, uh, people dumping their trailers.
They're just.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
Bays are fine.
It does, it's, it's actually illegal, but people do it.
Kind nasty.
Mr. Chairman, I think. For sure, Lion had a.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if you wanted to, to put some size limitations to that, because I'm, I'm thinking about the, uh, shooting complex out at, um, Gookin, and, and so there's some dry camping up there. But, you know, yeah, I'm saying if you have over ten units, if you have over, you know, are you gonna make everybody have five units? Put in a, put in a station?
Well, according to Eric, you have for every, uh, one acre, what was it, seven units?
Hold on a second, I believe it's.
So if you do a minimum of two acres, there's fourteen, and I think if you have fourteen units in there.
Twelve per acre.
Or twelve per, that's twenty-four.
Yep.
And, yeah, I, I think if you're gonna do a, a, a size, and you have the minimum size of twenty-four, uh, twenty-four units at two acres, yeah, you should have it. If it's smaller than that, then it's not gonna be a designated site.
Ground.
In, yeah.
And I'll tell you, maybe I'm coming at this, there is KO, that KOA version campground, you know, and then there is side of the road, park camper, get back around, pull in, pull out, you know, like a campground, you know, the old fashioned campground. It, we're, we're, they're all supposed to be self-contained, you know, and it's a different, they're
But if they have water.
They're two different facilities, not necessarily, they're dry campgrounds out there.
Well, I.
And what.
I guess I look at this.
Build a dry campground, that's one thing.
I look at this, Kelly, I guess, a different one, because you can grandfather everything that's in there already, I'm fine with that, but if you were to build a new one.
And, and it's
And I, I'm all for.
KOA, I'm all for.
No, I'm, I mean, for any of them.
And stuff, but if you're like, a campground, say the example, like the one, the county one down at the end over here, I don't know what facility they got, but they've got spots to put a camper, now they turn that into, okay, now you get two week camping, or ten day camping. You know, somebody building something like that on their side, it's, if it's just a dry campground.
No, I.
You're giving them a place, now what does that do for the guy who wants to let, if you're gonna do?
If you're gonna build it, and you're gonna, you're gonna get money from that, you should be responsible for the, the land around it, and for your land, and I think there should be a dump station minimum. I don't care if it's two acres, or if it's a hundred acres, there should be something in there for them to dump. I, if it's new, I.
Well, and I think with the minimum requirement, I think that kinda settles it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. That's my thought, and I, I'm disagreeing with Kelly, but.
That's fine, no, no, that's why we're having a discussion about.
The disagree.
Yeah, exactly.
That's right, that, um, just for clarification purpose, so, because we're gonna bring back this language probably at the next meeting, so, as far as direction for staff, Mr. Chairman, so what are we? Are we, are we good with just the, with the requirement, I mean, I heard differing opinions, it's, just, what is, what is the rest of the?
We probably need to talk and look, and
Okay, that's fine.
Maybe we, we need to sit down and find a consensus on our.
Good luck.
I, I think it, it would, with the minimum requirement, and with the numbers, I think it would, it would, that we should have
Okay.
in there, is, is my opinion.
That, that would be, also be my opinion.
Okay. And you all know my opinion, so.
What we're saying is, is, there'll be a threshold of, of, when you have this so many units, then it's.
And that would be, that would probably make, I don't know, that we'd need one of us to.
Yeah, and like, if you're, if you're like, Kelly, you've got a couple acres, or you've got a couple places, you're just saying it out there, you have two or three campers on it for the nice, national high school rodeo. I don't see a problem with that, I mean, people wanna do that, there's no.
And Albert, how, how he used to have his, he'd have six campers up there, and they'd run the one line out to the sewer dump, but most time I saw people hauling their buckets.
Yeah, but if you have a designated, if you build a designated area, a new one, it should have a dump station, is what I'm saying.
Which maybe part of my brain thing, we're out in the county, or out in the county where there are no facility, no water, no nothing. If somebody builds twenty units, like, you know, a different access to, uh, the gorge.
Yeah.
Like, but there's no, they can come pull their camper out there, as of right now, I can go pull my camper out there and park it, so somebody says, okay, I wanna open up my land for this, and people are leasing a space for me for a little while, just park camper, they do what they want with their camper.
Yeah, and so you know, no, because I, yeah. And if you're gonna build, if you're gonna put the money, well, if you're gonna build it, you're gonna, you're gonna do two, two acre minimum. You're gonna re, you know, you're gonna build this for specifically for campers, you don't, you know, and you're a private owner, you can say you can be there all summer long.
Right.
And if you don't, if you don't give them the opportunity to dump that, what are they gonna do? Either gonna hire a truck to come out and suck it out, or they should be able to take it to a place
And dump it somewhere.
And dump it someplace, and they will dump it someplace, and it might not be where everybody wants it, it might be in a ditch.
Right, well, I go by mine, I've emptied my camper being up on the mountain, and then taking it right over to the
Yeah, you do the proper thing, but, yeah, people say, well, I'm not gonna drive twenty miles out of my way to go dump this, I'll just open the valve as I'm on this dirt road going.
Okay. Okay, so.
Sorry, Eric.
That's okay, no, no, great discussion, uh.
Picked up the can of worms.
No, but, um, no, you have to have these discussions, so we can, um, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Whatever we argue about, it's gonna get argued out from somebody else.
I don't argue.
I got your point, Mr. Richard. I'm almost afraid to open it, to discuss the next thing, that's okay, though.
Let's have fun.
Okay, so, just so we know, um, independent travel units are, um, obviously RVs without, you know, with bathrooms, right? So, when you get to independent, or dependent travel units, you're getting into, you know, like a truck camper that just has a camper shell, has no bathroom, uh, associated, so. It kinda gets a little bit into tent camping a little bit, um, that's why you're gonna see some bathroom requirements coming up here. So let's, so just so we understand, so the first, and this, I have a discussion on this, too, um, is, well, as far as infrastructure we wanna require, now, what, some things I don't think, I think we, from a health and safety consi, concern, I would say safety is we want at least the roads in there to meet Fireco standards, I don't think that's I don't feel that's negotiable, I think that's something we have to have. Now, what we get into is Gillette, or, excuse me, Campbell County requires power, water and sewer to all RV parks. Well, I took water and sewer out because of some of the remote, we have a very large county. Question I pose to you is, is, um, are there instances where we want power, or, or not want power? You know, it's, the things to consider there are, um, when you don't have power, you're gonna have generators. So it's gonna be a little bit noisier and stuff, so, um, now I know the events complex, I believe, has certain areas where they don't have power, is that?
I think they all have power.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, we may have to look at, um, you know, instances where power may not, we may not require it, but just some feedback from, uh, Mr. Chairman, from the commission, as far as what infrastructure are we being required?
I have seen campgrounds with just strictly tent, campgrounds, I've never stopped in one.
Yeah.
And I don't think they have power, Eric, I don't think they have any, yeah, and.
Yeah, I can tell you, you know, uh, in Spearfish is typically where I camp.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's no power available, but it's just tent camping.
Yeah.
But they do have restroom facilities.
And we have some of that in here, but.
If they're, we need to go, if there's no power, density changes, if there is power, you could have higher densities, you know, there. Going into it, it's too much opportunity, there's a lot of opportunity to micromanage, and I don't wanna be in micromanaging, you know what I mean?
I would, I would hate to have them require power, because there are some places that are so remote, and to get the power out to them would just be cost prohibitive, I, I get that. Can you do it on a ca, uh, case by case, because, uh, you know, and then approve them?
Well, and maybe what we do, let's just throw this out there, and, and just, because we have a growth management area, right, so we have a boundary that goes around here. We have higher quality standards in there, just because you're higher density population, you know, even though the growth management area is big, but, um, you know, maybe there's certain requirements for that, because you may, you know, just think about this, so if you don't have anything, and somebody says, well, I don't wanna run power, and we're north of Rock Springs, off Yellowstone, and then it's next to a residential subdivision, it's CRS, so I think it's a great idea, but then there's no power to it, just concerns of sound, you know, things like that.
Sense, if we're also split from the growth management area and out to the broader county, you know, having different standards within those two. That does make a lot.
Maybe that will be a compromise on the dump station.
And, and literally, that could fall within that, too, you know? That was an answer to our.
Yeah.
There you go.
Within.
There you go, so we'll, we will look at that, we will, um, we will further define
Have we run you off time yet?
Between GMA.
Yeah.
And outside, okay. Okay.
Sorry, Eric, I know you have other meeting you have to go to, and we're probably.
It's okay, I got to eleven-thirty. We're.
Like, I think we should pass this one out, when Eric has to leave, then we come back, and maybe we've all come up with some new ideas, and Eric usually comes up with great ideas, so.
So what we'll, what we'll do here is, is in the next statement, just for some thoughts here. So, so when we're talking about dependent travel units, um.
Which page are you on now?
Still on that same page, it's just the next line down, it goes into the next. So each recreational vehicle site for dependent travel units shall have a connection to potable water, which may be shared by no more than four units, you know, you, you know what they're saying there, so basically, in a campground, you can have a spigot, water spigot for four units. Just again, it's just, uh, that way you're not having to run, again, I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll look at seeing with the, uh, these different areas, these different, uh, within the GMA and outside the GMA, I think will reflect that. Any feedback on that, uh, should it be more units, or?
There, there's some concern on backflow.
Yep.
And, yeah, so there, there's gotta be some separation between each unit, so that they're not cross-contamination between.
Oh, yeah.
A DQ will have requirements for that.
They will.
Yeah, for the, they'll have the certain hydrant that they'll need, and then if you are connecting, split, uh, splitting them, then you will have to have some sort of preventer on those.
Yeah, okay, okay, I'll look into that, then, for that.
Yeah, I think they make those, uh, backflow preventers, they hook up on the end of a spigot to, to a hose.
Mm-hmm.
I, they do make it, but then it would be the camper's responsibility to have that, I think you would probably want something more permanent than that. And not leave it up to the campers, but.
Yeah, if you leave it with the camper, it's not gonna happen.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So four might be too many.
Okay, I'll take a look at that, and then bring back that information to you, okay. Okay, the next one is, as far as when restroom, restroom facilities, so provide spaces for, so obviously it's dependent, we're not talking about dry camping, we're talking about dependent units. Uh, minimum contains and maintains the following restroom facilities, there shall be at least one individual, separate men's and women's restroom facility. I'm not going to get into politics of that. Restroom facility minimum requirements, again, I got this from another, um, I don't know if there's DQ requirements on this, but, um, basi, basing it on dependent travel units, so we're not saying, well, I, I, I'm gonna have dry camping of eighty units, and I need to have all these toilet facilities, we're talking about dependent, so, like in KOA where they have tent sites, okay? They usually have a certain number, and then they just have to have both toilets, showers. They usually have a certain number, and then they just have to have both toilets, showers, and sinks with hot water, basically, um, would be required. So, got this from another jurisdiction in Wyoming. Believe it was Wright, Wyoming is where I got this from. And so, um, any feedback on that? Does that look like too many? Not enough? Any thoughts on that, or defer to DEQ? I, I don't, I don't know. I don't think DEQ would have requirements on, on that, but I don't know.
I don't think so on DEQ, on the quantities or anything like that, but I do think it's something that you're gonna have to have available.
Yeah.
For any extended period of time.
So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't know, this, Rob would actually know maybe this answer for me, but if you're, if you're doing, um, a restroom facility, I take it you can't do it like the old Forest Service did, and dig a hole in the ground and put a concrete cap and a couple stalls on it.
And we'll pump out every.
Do, do, uh, do they allow that still, or do you have to do a septic system?
I, I'm not for certain, but I would imagine they still allow vault toilets, cause I see them everywhere still.
Yeah, they are. They are. Absolutely, yeah.
All right, well, I mean, if, if you're, if you're going by, I mean, you could actually do that. And I'm just thinking of the builder's aspect of it. If you can't get water, the only way you're gonna, it's either you haul water out or you do a well.
Yeah.
And the only way you can provide, uh, uh, facilities for a restroom is a hole in the ground. I wanna make sure they can still do that.
Okay, okay, we'll look at that.
Either way, we'll need a permit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or portable toilets as well, I mean.
Yeah, that's true. I'm just looking at the cost aspect, aspect of it, if you're, and then you, there's no way you get sinks and showers in there, yeah.
So maybe, again, maybe a look at inside, outside GMA with that too?
Yep, yeah. Inside you'd have to have it outside.
Okay.
Not so much.
Okay, we'll look at that. And then parking, looking at two spaces for each site, that, I mean, that is, that's pretty minimum. I mean, most people, when they, I know when we go camping, it's more than two. But at least a minimum of two, probably the one, the truck that's pulling it, and then another vehicle. Yeah, this is a minimum. Okay. So, again, this is just up for discussion. Uh, open space recreation area shall be provided. I don't think that might be necessary in all instances, um, especially if you're, let's say you're out by the gorge, well, why do you need a playground when you have a playground?
Yeah.
I mean, you're around, so, um, I'm not sure how necessary this is, except maybe if you're in a higher denser area, and people are staying there a little bit longer, you know, cause, um, maybe. But again, see what your feedback is on that. Do you think it's necessary?
I don't think it should be, I don't think it should be required.
Yeah, I would say no.
Okay, okay, we'll get rid of that. Okay. Uh, permitted accessory uses, so what we're talking about here is additional within a recreational, um, single-family residence, obviously the caretaker. Uh, central laundry, showers, recreation administrative spaces may be considered as accessory use for your recreational vehicle park, and then maybe just to, uh, address Casey, your concerns, um, just make sure, maybe we look at the cabin situation and make sure that's, cause you go to Kirk Gowdy, they have those too there also, in addition. So let's look at that too, to make sure. Cause there's, I don't see why, why we wouldn't wanna prohibit that.
You might look in South Dakota, you know, around that area, because I mean, there's a lot of those places that they put out there for the rallies that have those little cabins on them, and.
Okay.
So there might be some information.
Is there specific areas that you know?
You know, look at full throttle.
Sturgis, yeah.
Full throttle or a buffalo chip?
Yep.
Some of those other campgrounds, maybe not.
Really good idea.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, okay, so we'll look at making some additions there. Um, water and wastewater, just they need to meet DEQ requirements. Any concerns with that? Okay, I think so. Electrical.
I'm going back to DEQ.
Yeah.
Uh, that last sentence there, Wyoming DEQ shall approve. I would say that the applicant must obtain a permit to construct from Wyoming DEQ.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Electrical, the electrical connections shall provide for one twenty and two forty at each recreational site space. Um, probably, again, we'll have to look at outside, inside GMA. How's everybody feel about requiring both? I think that's a, if it's gonna be required, I think that's a good idea, cause you get, you know that trailers operate on both, either one twenty or two forty. If you don't have two forty. Oh, yeah.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't know.
Washer and dryers?
Yeah.
Yep, oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so. And then they gotta comply with the National Electrical Code. Um, as far as access roads in there, we're just saying that there's all-weather surface. I'm not saying they need to be paved, just because, but at least twenty foot.
They need to be whatever meeting fire codes or fire trucks can get in and out.
Yeah, that's, that's it. And that's what's in there, so what, you're talking about twenty-foot spacing, but only thirteen-foot sized roads. Cause a lot of what they'll do is, and you've seen this, is they'll do a one-way road in, and, um, I mean, thirteen is pretty narrow, but you gotta remember too, a lot of, they'll do pool-throughs and, you know, and you don't necessarily need this giant road in there. We're just talking about.
One direction, a lot of times, it's a one-way road.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Any concerns on that? And then dead-end roads, um, this is to the fire code, a hundred and fifty feet in length shall be provided with a turnaround, you know, so that's per the fire code. Markers of roading, um, again, these are private, so we're not saying, um, but we are saying that so at least for emergency services. I think what I need to do here, cause I did get comments in from, um, engineering, I think what, I need to go in there and incorporate those in, cause there are standards for that. Just so that if someone does get a call in there, that they're just meeting the right standard.
Will the engineering department have to approve these? Uh, I mean, if they're gonna do a full-blown, uh, RV park, it would almost fall under, um, regulations for, uh, zoning, I mean, for housing zoning. You know, uh, housing development. Don't you think? I mean, so you'd have, especially in the GMA, so you'd have to meet the fire codes, the streets and everything else like that.
For sure.
Yep. So the, the, the engineering department would have to approve everything, correct?
Yeah, they'd have to review it. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they're part of the process, so. Um, so I'm gonna make some adjustments to that mark, since I received comments later on. Not a big deal. Clearance from ignition sources. Um, just making sure brush and things like that combustible materials, minimum of thirty feet. So, I mean, we, you know, this is a lot for, uh, areas that are heavily wooded and such, that if you had them, but, um, you know, like dense brush trees, and so we just don't have that, but we have sagebrush and things like that, that we have to be. Any concerns on the thirty feet? I think that's right out of the fire code, I believe, too, Alan. Yeah, so. Okay, the next one is an interesting one that I got, uh, is on skirting. This is pretty much more of an as- this is an aesthetic issue. Um, so what we're talking about is, is make, and you've seen this, where you'll see plywood as a skirting, and it doesn't look great. So what they're saying is, is if you do do skirting, make it sure this to the manufacturer standard. So this is a higher development requirement. See what your feedback is, cause, uh, otherwise you're gonna get a hodgepodge of stuff.
Sure, is it for a long-term, if it's a guy who comes in for ten days, is moving through, he's there for four days, but he skirts his camper out with plywood.
You know.
The wind for blowing, or he's coming through in the winter, and he just puts the plywood, the plywood.
I think that.
It's a, it's whether it's a permanent structure, or it's just passing through. I mean, it is, it's steady, but I'm, I don't wanna tell somebody what they can, if they wanna look like.
I think this would fall on.
It's a campground.
This would fall on the property, the, the campground owners.
Okay, 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 we'll take that out.
Leave that with.
I'm okay.
Yeah, we agreed on something.
Wow, there we go. Um, so the next one's on garbage receptacles. I think you definitely wanna have.
Yes.
Where regardless, or, or you're gonna have, you're gonna have garbage everywhere. So that, that, so every ten sites, we're saying to have garbage, uh, commercial-sized dumpster for it.
You have to limit the size, like a five-yard, ten-yard, what, what do you think? You should, you should put a size in there? You just don't wanna put them like a little.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah. What do you, yeah, like a five-yard minimum or whatever?
Okay, we can look at that.
Okay. I hate to have somebody come back, well, it said, it didn't say what size, so, yeah.
Yeah, they pulled their garbage can from home.
Yeah.
There we go, there's your dumpster. Okay. Fuel cylinders shall be secured, uh, from falling over, um, being used, show comply with the NFPA fifty-eight. That's for the storage of handling of liquefied petroleum.
For fuel cylinders, for what? Then put their own five-hundred-gallon diesel tank out there, or their propane tank, or? You know, what do we?
Well.
I mean, if they're.
Yep.
Within the ZMA, or the, the GMA, they should be hooked up to gas, or whoever. Um, if they're out in nowhere land, they should be hauling propane tanks. Those aren't little, those are great big tanks, like the one down at, uh, Ace or something.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, it's like, it's a, I, I'm looking at, and I'm seeing a whole lot of things in it, and it's like a fuel source, or fuel cell, you know, what are we, are they bringing out five-gallon tanks for the people to buy for their generator, you know, they're just, national fire code covers what they're allowed to do anyway. Yeah, at least my understanding. So, I mean, we could just fall back to national fire code on what they can and can't do with that stuff, you know. They, they're gonna have a big propane.
This here, Kelly said liquefied petroleum gases in this line here.
Yep.
It doesn't say, uh, it doesn't say anything about, uh, propane.
Yeah, pain is liquefied when it's a tank.
Now, I get, you're, you're right there.
You know, it's, I'm like, there is a code, there's already a system to cover this. We need to just fall into their system, you know. And natural fire code's gonna let them, and I imagine the state has, DEQ has rules on what you can do with fuel lines, you know, if they're gonna try to pipe propane out directly to people's campers while they're camp, that's a whole nother.
Yeah.
Ball, ball, I mean, there's a lot of, we, we need to have the base covered, and then we need the one-off stuff, you know, not have to deal with everything. We just need to have the tools to get to, to be able to deal with everything. But some of this stuff, I'm like, just needs to fall back on what exists, you know, that's.
So, Mr. Chairman, so what we'll do is we'll, uh, make sure that it just complies with international fire code. I believe, do we need, Alan, what's your opinion on including NFPA fifty-eight, I believe, or are we covering the fire code? I know, I'm putting you on the spot. So we can vary, cause the NFPA, if you don't know, it is a lot of books.
It's a lot of.
Yeah, it's a lot of books, so it's. Okay. Okay, that's not a problem. Okay, so we'll, we'll go back and verify that.
Cause I mean, even DEQQ has rules on pipeline, you know, even a one-inch fuel line going under the ground, and now they have to have.
Mr. Chairman, we're not talking about, okay, we're not, we're talking about LP, petroleum. Okay, we're talking about what people use on their RVs. We're not talking about diesel, we're not talking about gasoline. That's a whole other set of requirements. We're not talking about burying anything in the ground. This is for the, cause what you will see sometimes is someone, cause I, you know, it's cold here, so if somebody's in an RV campground, they're gonna want a bigger tank, otherwise they're filling those tanks constantly, so you'll see a bigger tank. We're just making sure they're secure. That's all, that's all it is, so.
I was going into the business having.
No, we're not talking about.
More the line of the client brings out another hundred-gallon propane tank, plugs it in.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
And that still gonna fall under. Like a welding unit, or?
Any cylinder, um, I can't think of the exact terminology, but it said there, there are requirements for, or the maximum sizes, as well as the secure, um, having to be secured. Um, that is a requirement. That's, that is in the fire code, um, and obviously as well as NFPA. But, again, when we are, when, when we go back to reword that, I'll get the exact wording out of that. And, yeah, it should fall, I believe, under the fire code. Just keep under that, under that umbrella, and that'll, that will cover it all.
Sorry.
Okay. Then as far as, um, exterior screening, and I can definitely see this on case-by-case situations, so we, so we can make some modifications. We're just saying, having a perimeter fence or wall shall be provided between uh, vehicle park, and we're talking about residentially zoned adjoining properties, so we're not talking out in the middle of nowhere. We're talking about, if, if you are gonna be next to a recre- there's some sort of type of screening there. I think that is a good idea, um, especially if you're in the GMA. Any concerns? Okay.
Yeah.
I figured that one. Um, really, the next area, um, is site plan approval requirements. It's just a little bit more, so in addition to the zoning requirements, we're just saying that are in section four, we're saying that there's, because it's just different. I mean, there's some additional stuff you're gonna see in a campground that you don't see on a regular site plan for a house, so, you know, there's proper drainage. Um, you're gonna have, you wanna see a vehicular pedestrian cir- if applicable. Uh, pedestrian circulation plan, types of facilities, stormwater runoff, you know, real basic requirements, so. That's all I've got so far, Mr. Chairman, on this section, so what I'm gonna suggest is section nineteen, the supplemental use regulations, when the time comes, that we will postpone that until we can get that information. I don't know if I'm gonna have that for January or not. May, as Commissioner Richards has stated, have a workshop in between, um, so we can speak a little, have a little bit more time. So, um, might just do that, so.
We'll get back to it for a bit. One thing I don't know if I missed when we were going through this, you're looking at campground, we got fire pits. You know, did we cover that? They're gonna have, that's a very popular thing. I don't know if we just haven't got there yet. Or we miss that, cause that's something.
I've never seen that requirement in.
For health and safety, my brain went, are you gonna allow them?
Yeah, we can look at that.
Pits, are they gonna come in? If you don't put something, they're gonna come in, we're gonna have rings of rocks at every place somebody camps, so. You know, and I'm just, my brain thinking in the wrong way, probably.
I'm thinking it's on the owner's side. I go, that'd be great, have fire pits.
Have fire pits.
Have a little bundle of wood for seventy-five.
Barbecue grills and selling them wood, yeah. When I retire, become a campground host, that's how I'm gonna make my living.
That's right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so if we can go into, uh, definitions. And section twenty-one, page one forty-six, it's up on the screen. So, abandoned sign accessory structure, I believe those are moving into different sections. Is that correct, Cassidy?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. Um, I just changed them, so they'll be listed, sign, comma, abandoned, just to fit with the other um, definitions and to make them easier to find, so you can find, say, all of the signage definitions all in one specific spot. Same goes for accessory structure.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then if you go into one forty-seven, uh, we have a definition of ambulance station and appliance sales, service, and repair. Any questions on those, or changes? Okay. Next is under asphalt or concrete mixing and batch plant, new definition, or auction sales, any, any changes?
Looks good.
Okay. Onto page one forty-nine, there's quite a few definitions there. For auto parts store, bakery, bank, bar lounge and nightclub, beauty shop, bookstore, bottling plant and bowling alley. Again, these are just, we didn't have these definitions before, and so it's just defining them out. Yeah, and this is a working, as you know, a working document, so if something does come up, always just make a change. Thank Cassidy for this, she's the one who did all the work on the definition section. Uh, the next page, uh, one fifty, uh, definition of bulk plant or gasoline or LP gas, uh, bus terminal, camper sales, service and repair, car wa, car wash and or detailing, cemetery. Cemetery animal, excuse me, cemetery, just regular cemetery, and then childcare. And just so you know that these are the definition, what it does is it breaks down on childcare. A lot of this meets the, in alliance now with the actual state requirements, cause there's just different levels, so when you talk a childcare center, you're talking more commercial facility. And then when you get into a family childcare and a family childcare home, the numbers decrease. These are according to state statute, I would not recommend changing these numbers, so that we're, go ahead.
A number forty-eight, Cassidy, you're just gonna have to change it from Campbell County, okay, to Sweetwater County.
I just saw that, so thank you for bringing that up, I thought it noted here.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
You did take some of that, the wording in the beginning of that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Lot of work, Cassidy, that's a lot of work.
Yeah, she did a lot of work on this. I said, go on the use chart and get definitions as well. Definition of church, um, and then co-location. Just basically, we did not have a definition of that, that's the use of wireless support facility to more than one wireless communication, just so it's, I mean, that's, that's real basic, so if you're on a tower and a Verizon wants to come in. Okay, that's it for that one. Go on to the next page, community center, compressor station, commercial corrals, contractor services and contractor yard. And then a contractor yard off-site are, are further defined. Any questions on that page? I mean, and then you go into the next page on one fifty-three, definitions of convenience store, copy and print shop, correctional facility, uh, crematorium, animal, regular crematorium, daring, dancing or theatrical studio, dance studios, uh, and then dependent travel unit. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that we, I'm just gonna make a note of that. We're gonna postpone that, cause that's a part of the RV stuff, so that we're. Okay. Next page is department store, drive-in theater, drugstore and dry cleaning plant, all defined. Um, onto the next page is dwelling temporary. So that's the use of a manuf, I believe that's just moving, that's what you said, moving it from one. So all the dwelling stuff is lining up now, as you see it, so when someone actually goes into there now, it's all listed together, so. Now explosive storage is defined now. Onto the next page on one fifty-six, exterminator service, fairgrounds, farm implement services, feedlot, feed store, filling station. Filtered as far as concerning outdoor lighting is now defined, just to further clarify, and then fire protection training facility is defined. Okay, well, the next one is, uh, definition of fire station, florist, fraternal organization. Not sure we'll ever see all this stuff, but you know. Better have it not, right, so, um, Honda, page one fifty-eight, garden center, nursery, define miniature golf. Regular golf course, public or private, or driving range is now defined, um, grain and feed mill, and a grain elevator is defined. Don't see a lot of those in Sweetwater County either. Going on to the next page, we have commercial greenhouse now defined, grocery store, grooming facility, hardware, home improvement, hatchery, hazardous waste disposal facility, class one, two and three, and I believe, Cassidy, this now matches more in line with the state, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Onto the next page, we're defining out heavy equipment, teleport hospital, hotel and hunting camp. Um, as far as incinerator, onto the next page on one sixty-one, and then I'm gonna ask that independent travel unit, that's also, we'll postpone that one, I'll make a list of that. Injection well, that's an important one, uh, we did not have that defined, so. On the next page on one sixty-two, laboratory, research and supporting, including medical, veterinarian and forensic. And then laundromat, dry and cleaning and library are all defined now. Onto the next one, page on one sixty-three, liquid nitrogen plant, liquor store establishments, locksmith, lumberyard is now defined. This was a lot of work, just going through this, oh my goodness, Cassidy. Page one sixty-four, uh, mining surface is now defined, mining and processing underground, mobile home, mortuary. Onto page one sixty-five, museum is now defined. On one sixty-six, nursing home. An office is defined now, pet store, pharmacy. Onto page one sixty-seven, photography studio, pipe yard, police station, post office, power plant are all defined now. Onto page one sixty-eight, railroad facilities, ranching and grazing is now defined. Onto page one sixty-nine, um, I will pull recreational vehicle park out. Refine, refinery, rifle, pistol, skeet, trap shoot, range, rolling, skating, uh, rooming and boarding house. I will remove sanitary station, cause that's, that's associated with, um, the RV stuff. And then sawmill, schools for heavy equipment training, and then, we actually have permitted that before, uh, schools, public or private, so school, um, and then schools trade and vocational, seasonal sales and Christmas, uh, tree, firewood, farmer market type stuff is all defined now, sewage treatment facility, animal shelter is now defined. Page one seventy, and then we go to one seventy-one. This is that shelter transit or school bus, we actually have a couple of those out in the county, is now defined, and then abandoned, sign abandoned, as Cassidy was stating, uh, is now all in the sign section. Onto one seventy-two, we have slaughterhouse, um, it's like billboard is just included in there off, off-premise. As far as on page one seventy-three, um, sporting goods store, structure accessory, non-residential, and then structure accessory residential are now defined out. And then on page one seventy-four, um, theater, tire store, track, travel agency, oh, and the transient guest means a guest who remains for less than thirty days. So that is to address, that's in the fire code. So just so you know, that's what, um, we're just defining it out to match the fire code, so someone's considered transient, when you talk about transient, um, it's under thirty days. When you get into hotels, motels, that's, that's, that's there. One of these days, we're gonna have to address Airbnbs, unfortunately, just hate to bring up it, or not. I don't want to, but, okay, track, um, travel agency and then trucking, very basic definition there. Then if you go onto page one seventy-five, vehicle sales, service and repair motorized, and then vehicle sales, service or repair non-motorized are, are, um, defined out. Warehouse, water treatment and disposal, that's to be in, in compliance with DEQ. Onto page one seventy-six, welding equipment sales and service, work camps, uh, both, you know, when you're above twenty-five employees, or, you know. And then, uh, compared to a temporary where it's just a lot smaller scale, usually get that with road projects, really small work camps. And that's it, Mr. Chairman, for the definition section, it was a lot of, lot of definition, a lot of work done by our planner, Cassidy Brown, appreciate that.
Cassidy has a long work, a lot of work, how long did it take?
On off.
Months?
Yeah, a few months.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, what we're gonna request is that, um, the language amendments be approved with the exception of section nineteen, which is, let me just confirm that, I believe it's section nineteen. Section nineteen not being approved. Or postponed, however we wanna do that. And then the definitions of dependent care, independent travel unit, recreational vehicle park and sanitary station being being removed. And in the conditional use section, that also, the word says recreational vehicle parks, that also being removed from that, and in the use chart, the word said recreational vehicle park, so. That's the motion that I would request, um, moving forward, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for, uh, Eric?
Can you please re, go over it all again?
Sure, so.
No, just kidding there.
Oh, you are?
Mr. Beingham, just kidding.
I could probably do it. I'll accept challenge.
Okay, if there's no questions, we'll open it up to the public. There's nobody online, right? All right, we'll close the, the, uh, public portion, um, does anybody have any questions or anything they wanna add? Any comments?
Yeah, let's find my.
Once you get there.
Got my head, but I don't know where I saw it.
I want you to know here, Mr. Beingham, that I'm not the one that's being difficult today, it's, it's.
No, I'm good.
You're, you're good?
Whatever I find, I know how to bring it back up.
All right, well, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, and that'll include, as Eric's proposing, um, to, uh, postpone section nineteen and any language that involves section nineteen and other.
Yeah, yeah.
That is correct.
I would second that.
I already got a motion to approve in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries for nothing. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate your patience with that.
Okay, and then will we have, will we have anything next month?
Yes, we will. So we have Maverick subdivision scheduled. We will see how it goes. Um, there's, there's, there's a lot of things that still need to be submitted, so, um, not confident that it will, but we'll still have to meet because it is scheduled, so regardless, we will have something. You know, hopefully I can have back, uh, just so you know, it is an early meeting, so when we get back, it's gonna be pretty quick, cause you'll have New Year's the day, week before, and then bam, we'll have a P and Z meeting right after the Board of County Commissioners, cause it's one of those weird months where the board meets on the seventh, and you guys meet on the eighth, so it's gonna be a quick turnaround. I just don't see, there's a lot of stuff and items that they still need to address that I haven't been, so. We will see how it goes, but we'll still need to meet regardless, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, having no other business and gone through the agenda, we'll adjourn, the time is eleven twenty-seven.
Merry Christmas to y'all.
Oh, yeah.